Oh.
I think you're gonna have to hand over the first one.
Yeah, they've got it somewhere, so they don't have to stay with the plates. Thank you. They said Danielle. Stick the chicken over there. Well, no, they won't wave them. Oh, come on. Stevenson, Stevenson, I have to tell them right now. That's just something.
It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven o'clock PM. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
State of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with a degree of justice for all.
Thank you. First up, we'll have public comment. We have one person tonight, Veronica Tucker. Just as a reminder, we have three minutes to speak publicly. Thank you. Right here, please, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Veronica Tucker. I am here because of the proposed hotel on Gooding Avenue, which I know will directly affect the high school. Not just the old high school, but the new high school. My opinion on this is that DEM is responsible for this. I'm a part of the Bristol Land Trust. I've lived in Bristol my entire life. We all know it's no secret that this high school has been underwater since the day it was built, and I have higher hopes for the new high school. We do need it. DEM declined a permit to this group in 2016. I'm not sure what happened, what changed, that they have now given them a permit for this hotel. I believe as citizens of this town, we have the right to have DEM in front of us to answer questions, like what changed? Do we want to know? This is going to directly affect this entire neighborhood, potentially. There's no mitigation system, that is for sure. So it's going to affect the cemetery again. I was looking at the streams down at the senior housing down here. It, Silver Creek goes right through the town. It's going to affect us all. I would beg all of you, parents, anyone, to go to the next planning board meeting. I'm not sure the date, but they may not be on the agenda anyway. Please check the Bristol Land Conservation Trust Facebook page for updates. Go on the planning board website and look at their agenda. Strength in numbers does matter. If we're against this, for whatever reason you're against it, please show up at the meetings, bring your friends, family, write letters to Diane Williamson, to the planning board, whoever you want to in the town, but those are the people that should be getting the letters. To say nothing about the fact that it's going to hurt all the small B and Bs in this town, the existing hotel, we have a hotel that is defunct now as a hotel. Do we need a hotel? I don't know, but I'm worried about the wetlands. You can't go back and fix that. Why all of a sudden are we building a hotel three stories high on wetlands? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now I would kindly ask the members of the school committee to join me in front of the table so we can celebrate some student successes.
So I, before I read it, and I'll read it, but I just want everyone to know, this is not just a national award, it's an international award because best buddies is not just here in the US, but international. So the KMS and MHHS best buddies chapters were recognized by best buddies international as outstanding chapters for 2025 and were the 2025 Rhode Island chapters of the year. So this prestigious honor celebrates the school's exceptional commitment to inclusion and leadership in supporting individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Both chapters were recognized during the opening ceremonies of the 2025 Best Buddies Leadership Conference held in July at Indiana University in Bloomington. We have invited all of our KMS and MHHS best buddies chapters to this meeting for their recognition and to congratulate them for the work they have done and continue to do. So we have such an awesome huge list. I'm going to read all of the middle school students' names and then recognize their advisors, and then I'm going to ask all the middle school students to come up from the chapter so we can take a group photo, so we can put that up on our website, and then we'll do the high school. All right. So as I call your name, please feel free to come up and get ready for your photo. So we have Abel Abindra, Ally Abusi, Macy Adams, Alana Amaral, Aiden Anderson, Cora Atwood, Ellie Barlow, Andrew Barley, Jacob Bento, Kinsley Bock, Sawyer Bowe, Fulton Carpenter, Brynlee Cleary, Rodham Cohen Sharon, Sky Conti, Sadie Costa, Molly Dalton, Ellie Daniel, Popper Davis, Sydney De Robio, Jasmine Faria, Kyle Freitas, Timothy Freitas, Julia Goday, Jasri Goldstein, Anais Gonzales Santiago, Emma Gray, Chloe Haskell, Lila Hayden, Quinn Hudak, Khalid Idris, Sophia Jimenez, Jasmine Jolie, Jack Kettner, Ella Pisto, Charlotte Lake, Isabella Lazo, Sean Little, Erica Massey, Giovanna Pimentel, Leana Pereira, Lucas Pereira, Juliana Reynoso, Loki Rome, Brett Lee Roast, Emily Salaman, Pearl Silva, Emma Soto, Logan Souza, Zoe Stanzioni, Benjamin Taylor, Zoe Trafka, Avali Vasquez, Delilah Vaughan, Rosalie Vaughan, Liam Walker, Gabrielle Young, and their advisors Sarah Malek, Bonnie Panza, and Rachel Will.
Keep smiling. Big smile. Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. As if that wasn't amazing enough, now we have a whole group from the high school. So we have Justin Anderson, Alexandra Barley, Jason Bernard, Eli Borges, Samantha Campbell, Miley Cobb, Julia Dubois, Adriana DuFault, Austin Durant, Kylie Durant, Isabella Flaherty, Camilla Fox, Emmeline Heald, Ethan Comega, Milo Latiri, Albert Leach, Bailey Leonard, Gabe Mediris, Caden Mortensen, Scarlett Murray, Austin Opalowski, Joseph Padua, Angela Peary, Kiara Puccino, Savannah Souza, Juliana Souza, Cassandra Souza, Shane Stills, Susan Sylvia, Lacy Vargas, and their two advisors, Lisa Verrett and Shayna Amaral. High School graduate Raymond Sylvia was their activities director from last year and was instrumental in helping achieve these awards, so I don't want to forget her. Thank you, Mrs. King. Do you want to join me for this one? All right. While we're at it, we have a few more accolades. I'm going to let Mrs. King lead this one.
Thank you. I am very proud to be here tonight to recognize five students who have achieved the status of National Merit Commended Scholars. And what does that actually mean to be a commended scholar? It's an achievement recognizing these young men and women for outstanding potential for future academic success. It's earned by outstanding achievement on the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, NMSQT, which is an assessment we give each year for interested juniors, and we hope that this recognition tonight broadens the educational opportunities and inspires these young men and women to continue their pursuit of academic excellence. So without further ado, do we just call them up one at a time? All right, Nathaniel Bag. There's one, and I can't remember. It's not here, I don't remember. Yeah, okay. Jessica Deal. Carson Jerome. Gavin Stigall. And Riley Waters. Well done, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. Next up, our first of two presentations will be our partners from PMA for a monthly construction update.
All right. Thank you, guys, for having us. Long time no see from school committee. We just wrapped up.
We just wrapped up a site tour, so I'll keep things brief tonight. My name is Nick Hall with PMA. I'm also with Walter. Chris Leftler, all of PMA. So tonight, we're just going to run through a general project update, schedule update, next steps, and then we'll have time for questions and comments at the end. So budget and cash flow, this hasn't changed since the last time we were here. Today, we received the MOA from RIDE, so we're going to reforecast our cash flow based on that. We also got a cash flow from BRATE, so we're working through that. The build-to-date is as of last month, too. We just processed BRATE's rec, so that number will jump up next time you guys see us. And then pay-go reimbursements, Danielle has been working with RIDE, so we'll get those and put it as we go. Continuity update, same as last month here, too. We're still tracking the current exposure is 20%, which is the audio enhancement systems. We do have a handful of change orders right now that we haven't seen come across our desks. Couple small T&amp;M items on the high school site, and then we rerouted some mechanical piping at Hugh Cole, so those will get put into the change log as soon as we have them from BRATE. Soft cost contingency hasn't changed. The only thing that's changed on here is the tile collapsed. We'll jump right into the construction update. So as I said, we're out there with school committee. So this is in B building, right where the chorus band room is, so I'm standing with my back to the auditorium. That's the gym you can see in the far left, and then the CTE shops are over there on the right. And then just over that wall on the right is also the cafeteria. Hard to tell now, but it'll start shaping up soon. This is the courtyard between D and E buildings. So they just see they backfilled it, packed it it, and then that's the far corner of D building over there. So after the CTE shops, there's some mechanical rooms over by the outhouses, and then this side has some art classrooms that directly look into the courtyard. This is a foundation wall, so this just shows you kind of all the steps there. You can see the insulation, the waterproofing, and the drainage board. There's a better picture after that. I'll explain a little more. Here's that picture. So that's the, you can see the wall. That's the primer they put on there on the far left. Then they put the waterproofing, they insulated, and then they put on the drainage board. So the drainage board just allows the water to sort of lick away from the building a little bit more. It just is an added layer of security. This is a foundation wall in F building. So this is the last building. This is kind of the furthest we've come along. So you can see the rebar on the form side, and this has already been placed. This is some of the site drainage slash erosion controls. You can see we have the straw walls, the layer of fabric, and then some stones to catch any sort of runoff from the site before it enters the creek. This is the elevator pit in building A. So this will be a first to second floor elevator. It's right in the main lobby there. In the next couple of weeks, we'll start to see the shaft being built out of CMU, so that's something to look forward to. This is the far corner of F building towards A. So this is the last point in the building before we start connect. So they're leaving this open right now just so they can drive into the building. But eventually, this will all be closed off. They'll build the building pad, and then we'll start putting steel. This is the same side of F building, just a little further down. So this is just the walls that are formed up on one side. So you can see the rebar. This gets inspected. Then they'll close up the wall, and then they'll place concrete. This is just the site entrance. So you can see they added some stone to catch any sort of runoff before it enters the street or leave the site. This is an overall picture from the gym. So you can just see all the progress since the last meeting. So you can see all the buildings have kind of been backfilled and nice and flat, so they're getting ready to set steel, and then they'll start prepping for the slab on grade. Yeah, I don't think there's anything else you could really see.
And you can't, you can't tell from that photo, but when we were out there, you said that's about seven feet above where we are now. Yeah.
So the, so the site kind of slopes, or did slope towards the river, so the far right side of the building is basically where it was, and then we brought the rest of it all the way up with this structural fill. Yep, that's a good point.
It's hard to tell on the picture.
Yeah. This is from the football field. So you can see they stripped most of the loan off the football fields, and in this picture, they're actually building a little laydown area. So as more items start to show up on site, they'll have a nice clean place to put them. I don't know if they're going to put steel here or structures for drainage, but they'll use it. And then you can see the whole, the bleachers are all gone. Most of the demo on the site is done. See the lacrosse field still in the back there. Just sort of the general overview of the site from this angle. Over at Hugh Cole, so this is some of that change order work that I talked about. So we rerouted some mechanical piping in order to avoid some conflicts with the future duct work. So this was all tracked on a time and material basis from BRATE, so PMA signs off every day that there's a certain amount of people were there working, doing whatever they were doing. So we track all that. And as I said, that'll get added to the change log as we see this change order come through to us. And this is just the same mechanical piping that they insulated. So we have a pressure test on this, so they own pressurizing it for 24 hours with a certain PSI, and we sign off on that as well. That's basically it for construction updates. Anyone have any questions before I go through the schedule real quick?
Could you just clarify what the MOA is that we just received from RIDE, please?
Yeah, the memorandum of agreement. So that just basically states, Rob, RIDE has the five projects broken out. It shows the reimbursement from them. So we got each project's broken out. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but we were able to shift some funds from the smaller projects towards the high school project. So we expected that. Yeah, RIDE just approved it. So like I said, we're going to reforecast our cash flow, and everything landed where we hoped it would. So it's great news today from RIDE.
Thank you.
No problem.
Does anyone else have any questions before they keep going?
Yeah, all right.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Only because I don't think I knew that, or if I did, I forgot. So was it a savings from our smaller projects that, or are we taking money away and reallocating?
No, it was when all the costs came in, we were able to adjust any savings from what we thought. Remember, we projected what the costs were, and then we had the bid, whatever they did, reconcile the two folks who verified. I forgot what you called them.
Estimator.
Thank you, the estimators. There were two independent estimators. Then when we got the final price, we were able to shift more money to the high school because we had better costs at the other schools.
Okay, so nothing's being caught. It just came in less than what we projected. Okay, thank you.
And that savings, savings ended up getting shifted to the high school.
Right, thank you.
Anything else?
And you'll actually see that MOA at our next meeting because it requires approval by the school committee and re-signatures for the shift. So you'll see the detail.
No more questions. We'll jump through a quick schedule update. This is actually our last slide. So steel erection start, I think last time we actually showed January on the schedule. So we're hoping to get steel either this week or next week. So that's a big milestone for us. We'll probably be talking, talking and topping off ceremonies where they put in the last steel beam in the next couple of months. So just something to keep an eye out for. It'll be just like the groundbreaking ceremony. We'll have everyone come and speak. Be a nice little ceremony. Mount Hope High School, Phase One, new building suspension completion is still May of '27. No changes to any of these. Phase Two is December of '27, so it'll be all wrapped up by then. And Colt Andrews and Rockwell have the same substantial completion date, which is August 27, 2027. And then KMS and Hugh Cole are the year before that, August. So August 28, 2026. And that's all we have for you tonight. If you guys have any other questions.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Just want to say thank you again. I think you've demonstrated, but you guys are doing what you said you were going to do 32 months ago and really being on-site and present and signing off and really organizing the orchestra out there. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can go right to the principals. Actually, Courtney will kick it off, I think.
So now.
Just give Randy a minute to put up her presentation.
But I believe October is National Principals Month, so what better way to celebrate our principals than thumb up front and discuss year assessment data? But we're going to, we're going to start off with our Assistant Superintendent, when ready.
All right. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to update you all with where we are right now at the beginning of year and also share some updates of how our schools fared on the state assessments. So our first few slides I'll run through, and then I'll hand over to the school principals to get a little bit more in-depth about the individual's successes and/or challenges and steps they are taking at each school. So, okay, so this is our overview. We'll be talking about the assessments we use, where we are at BOY, going through some of the assessment results we just recently received, and then moving into our next steps. So. As a review, the comprehensive assessment system that Rhode Island uses involves many assessments. We give the RIDE CAS in April and May. Grade nine, 10, 11, they give PSAT, SAT in ELA in math. The dynamic learning maps, alternate assessment. At the middle school and in fifth grade, we give NGSA, which is also given in 11th grade. And access is given to all English language learners, K through 12, and that measures the four domains of English language learning across listening, speaking, reading, and writing. In terms of local interim assessments, we use for a diagnostic tool iReady, and we have our beginning-of-year results right now in both ELA and math. So I want to take a moment and review with you what last year looked like with iReady, and then take a look at the snapshot we just received for BOY. I might need my glasses. I didn't realize how far away this would be, but I thought it was big enough. But if you look at last year, that green slashed line is going to tell you, let me just pull it up here so I can see it at my own level here. Oh, thank you, Danielle. Much better. Yeah, so that green dash line says that the final diagnostic last year was 60% of our students in terms of ELA in the elementary school were at or above grade level. If you look at the line under that, which is slightly faded, at the beginning of the year, 16% of our students were at that level, so quite an increase. And if you look down to the right, the red, two or three years below grade level, we had 15% of our students. And at the top, that shrunk to about 4% of our students. So that's last year's snapshot. And if you look at this year, we're starting exactly the same with 16% of our students at BOY, who are at, performing at grade level. And we have 15% of our students, just like last year, two or three years below grade level. Moving to the middle school, it's a similar pattern of, you know, from year to year, the numbers are similar. We have this year, at the bottom, we'll start this time, 32% of our students are scoring at or above grade level. And last year, at the beginning of the year, we had 33% score in that range, and we ended the year up 41%. If you look at that faded line from last year's first window at BOY, we had 17% of our students, and then 10% of our students, two to three years below grade level, so 27%. And this year, exactly the same at BOY, 27%. So we are hoping to not only achieve the same level of growth, but exceed that at the middle school and elementary school levels for ELA. For math, we'll start at the top again. We have right now 59% of our elementary school students scoring at or above grade level, as opposed to the beginning of the year last year. Excuse me, this was last year's end of year. 59% of our students at or above grade level, started the year with 10. This year, we're starting with nine. So again, we hope to see similar growth and exceed last year's growth. This year, at the bottom, 13% of our students are already at or above grade level. And last year's BOY, which is that faded line we were at, 14%, which grew to 30. Last year's BOY had 23% of our students, two to three years below grade level in math. And this year's BOY shows 24%. So it's very similar. We don't see a huge difference between last year's beginning of the year and this year's, but what we are hoping to see a big difference in is the end-of-the-year results. We hope to exceed last year's growth and achievement. So this snapshot right here is our K to eight progress toward our 2027 proficiency goal of 75%. So you'll notice the ELA RIDE CAS data in green, the math RIDE CAS data in blue, and our NGSA science data in yellow. And what I see here when I look at this as fresh eyes to the district is that we're really getting similar results year over year. We do have some bursts of notable growth and things to celebrate, most recently and most notably in ELA. But what we're noticing, and what I'm noticing as I review this data, is that what we're doing is yielding good results, but now our next step is really, it's got to be what are we doing to push achievement to continue on an upwards trajectory? And I believe the secret here that we need to tap into is our people, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that later, because we have greenlit curriculum. We're using our high-quality instructional materials in every classroom. We continue to provide professional learning to our teachers and our administrators, so that secret sauce, in my opinion, and we're really working on that together this year, is developing our people. This is another way to look at that same data that we just showed you. If you look at ELA, we went up 7% as a district in ELA last year, which is a great increase. We were a little less of an increase in math, but we still went up 1%. We stayed stagnant in science. If you look at the state, though, our growth did exceed the state's growth. The state as a whole went up 3% in ELA. And again, we met the 1% increase in math. And we even matched the stagnant 0% in science. So what we need to do this year is exceed that change in a positive direction. Right here, if I were to keep the entire state on this grid, you would see blue dots everywhere. So what I did, this is an achievement and growth representation. So if you look across the X asset, excuse me, X axis, it's achievement, and if you look up and down, that's growth. So the higher you are on the Y axis is how high your growth was, and the further to the right on the X axis is your achievement. So what I did here was I just kept comparable or neighboring districts on the grid. And the school's size of the dot has to do with the size of the population of each school, and the depth of the color has to do with poverty levels at each school. But just as a quick representation, so those lines represent the state average in the middle of growth and achievement. So if you look, we have Rockwell, Colt Andrews, Hugh Cole, and Kikamuet, all above the state average in achievement and growth in that top right quadrant, which is a great place to be. Geteras ended the year above the line in achievement, but slightly below the line in growth. Last year, we only had two schools, just by comparison, in that top right quadrant, Rockwell and Colt Andrews. So we're happy to have our two remaining K to eight schools in that quadrant as well. For math, similar, but not exactly similar. We still have Rockwell and Colt Andrews in that top quadrant. And this year, joining them is Hugh Cole. Kikamuet is right on that line of growth and above the line in achievement. Geteras did end slightly above in achievement, but to the left of the line in growth. As I said, this is an increase from last year. And if you did pull up the entire RIDE data portal, which is public info on the RIDE website, you can see the entire state, but these are just schools that we felt were comparable or neighboring. So how are we using this data? One of the things we noticed in analyzing our school-level data is that we noticed a pattern, which I will get into a little bit more when the school principals come up to talk about their results and their next step. But the pattern is that we are making growth in classrooms where the teachers are continuing to strive for growth personally and professionally. So what we're doing right now is taking our high-quality instructional materials. We're working across all grade levels on increasing academic discourse. We are maintaining high expectations and providing scaffolds for all students. In bringing fresh eyes, as I mentioned, to this district and its data, I'm very excited to bring a philosophy that I believe wholeheartedly, which is that it's people and not programs who determine the quality of a school. And while having high-quality curricular materials is of utmost importance, it is our human capital, our teachers, our administrators, and our support staff who will make the difference in taking those strides needed to taking our achievement and growth data to the next level. On that note, we are hoping and working hard to increase the coaching support, so extend our reach, taking our existing coaches, looking at the amount of cycles that they worked with teachers last year, and increasing that number. And also, we have extended that coaching group by one. We have a Rhode Island Reads grant, and we were able to bring one new reading and writing coach into our district to work with elementary teachers. We also are fine-tuning our tier-one instruction. So right now, we have 33 teachers and administrators signed up to take a Pathways course through Rhode Island Department of Ed, which is about specialized reading knowledge, specifically working with English language learners. So 33 professionals will be earning professional learning units this year directly related to working with MLLs. And like everyone knows, working with MLLs is just good teaching in general. It's finding strategies to work with all of our learners to reach every student in our classroom. And also, we are looking at supporting our school's implementation of MTSS. So coaches and specialists are at the elementary level. They support school-based leaders, as well as our coordinators of literacy and math, in targeting interventions for students. We also want to make sure we have the time and resources necessary. We looked at scheduling over the summer, made sure that our schedules allowed for more support professionals to have direct access to students. And we wanted to make sure that our acceleration blocks were designed with support in mind so that all students were able to get what they need during those very important blocks of time. At this time, I would like to talk about the school-level reports, and we will start with Colt Andrews. And we will start with Colt Andrews. However, due to the fact that we closed Geteris, I do have Colt Andrews and Geteris's data lumped together. And we have Principals Kearns and Swist here. And then in terms of next steps, being that most of the student body and staff are housed at Colt Andrews, they just have one page to discuss Colt Andrews' next steps in owning both of these slides of data. Come on up. Thank you.
I'm sorry, before we pass it over to the principals, I think we have a couple of questions just for our assistant superintendent at the moment.
Sure, absolutely.
Ms. Barlow.
There's one question and a comment, because I want the principals to maybe react to it when they talk. So just so I know, I noticed some stuff in the science that we're going to get into. And I wondered myself, mystery of science, was that new this year as we think about that, or no?
No, so I'm new to science here, too. So mystery science was used last year. And I know that the hope was to pilot, is it Open Saiad that we're using at the middle school? And we want to bring it down to elementary school. So the hope was to pilot that. And I believe there was some curricular materials that we weren't able to purchase for all. And so I think the pilot's on ice for now. And we're going to continue to research bringing Open Saiad to the elementary level. Our K-8 science coordinator is also on a leave of absence. So we are searching right now for a science coordinator liaison who's going to be working certain hours, not as a full-time position, who can support us in making those decisions in terms of what we're bringing to elementary next year.
Okay, I didn't know if there was a new curriculum, and maybe that had impact. If you guys want to talk.
We didn't fully all of this design. It was an implementation program that we had to put up.
Got it.
This year, we're at all.
Okay. Yeah, I've heard of that. Yeah. And then my other thing when folks address it is I know a lot of people talked about writing. So when you're talking about your school, elementary schools, if you can talk about any impact on writing, that was a theme we saw last year of what supports, maybe district-wide, we're connecting with that for the ELA stuff. The ELA achievement various places was great, and want to commend folks for that. And then the Rhode Island Reads grant, is that a federal grant, or is it state money? Do we know?
It's a state grant.
Thank you.
It's a, yeah, it's a three-year grant, and it's state money, so we have that money.
So I do want to, before I hand over to Colt Andrews' team, in terms of writing, I know that two of our elementary school teams and I met to work on the next upcoming professional development day, having the whole two hours dedicated to writing, you know, looking at writing samples, grading against the Rycast rubric, and really diving deep into calibrating on scoring our writing and what our next step should be. And we now have those Rycast release items and student work samples. So that'll be the focus, as far as I remember. That's what we decided on for November. So I'll hand it over to Colt Andrews.
Hello, Anna. So I'm here to celebrate Colt Andrews Elementary School. So, okay. So first, let's start with Rycast ELA. I'm excited to see the star, and we've increased nine points, which is a big deal for us. Mathematics, there was a half point up, but they just rounded it to 47%, but it's still 47. So we flatlined there, and we did go down in science. And for iReady ELA, we had a 4% change, which is a star. And then our math went up nine points. The only thing we wonder is that our Rycast does not match, oh, iReady. So we're just curious as to why it does not.
So good. Geteris, we had kind of rough the air for a few reasons, reasons not to skip. The, this data definitely needs some affirmation. We had in fifth grade, which was one-third of our staff, our teaching staff, we had two monitors up. We lost a fifth-grade teacher a few days before, you know, the school year began. It was actually the district's teacher of the year. So that was definitely impactful. You know, we did get a lot of support for those teachers, especially in math. They both had coaches, and they both had, they both attended the foundation of math training. So we do see a little bit of a bump there. But if you look at, to compare fifth grade to the other tested grades, it really dragged the numbers down. Fourth grade had fantastic. But it's just, you know, I mean, it was, the data just picked itself.
So this year? This year, we have. Okay. Okay. I can go with one. Okay. So we thought that as we blend our, blend actual schools together this year, we wanted to create a sense of community and collaboration between the two schools, with students and staff.
Deb, can you just move the microphone over so they can hear you on?
Sorry, yeah, so building community was first and foremost. And I think that lays the foundation for good teaching and learning. So we've been working really hard on building a very positive school culture at Colt Andrews. The second thing is we've been fostering a lot of shared opportunities and experiences, communication, school-wide initiatives that build a cohesive school culture. We've been doing that with some meeting times, some CTT, some spirit days, after-school PD, we've included all at grade level. So that's been a plus for us, and it's going to be a continuation all year long. Did you want to add anything about school culture? Our community? And we've established a principal advisory committee, which Keith and I are spearheading so that students can have voice in our school, in our school. The second piece is, I'm way off with this, but is it okay if I? Okay, okay. All right, I did mine over the weekend, and I guess it changed a little bit. Okay, so the first thing that's really exciting this year is we're piloting a Mira, which is an AI-powered reading tutor and screener that Anna and Courtney introduced me to. So it's for grades K to five, and it's to provide personalized one-on-one reading support, a little different than if you had someone in front of you. This is more independent practice and small-group instruction. Secondly, we have a very robust and authentic MTSS system in our school, where teachers meet, tomorrow's our MTSS day. We, teachers meet during their CTT time, so that they're not out of the classroom. And they meet with their reading specialists to go over student progress, progress monitoring, and inform next steps. We are in the process of utilizing high-dosage tutoring for ELA and math. We have some teachers in our school, some teacher assistants, some teachers that may have a block of time that may be open. Even our reading coaches, they're taking small groups to ramp up students in ELA and math, especially in math. Let's see, our acceleration block is in full bloom. It's very robust. It happens every day with small group instruction. And we're using all of our data during CTT and MTSS to provide small-group instruction to those students, especially in the area of enrichment. We're calling it acceleration now instead of intervention. That's really a plus for us. Anything about MTSS or anything like that? Okay. We're really proud of our instructional coaching model this year, and it's growing. We have teachers not only using their data to provide opportunities to be coached in the classroom, but also enjoying having someone else with them to share strategies and co-plan. So teachers are very excited about that. Some teachers, it's based on their data from the previous year, and we're encouraging them to utilize coaching. So for some, it's very new. But teachers that had it last year are really encouraging those new teachers to just give it a try. It's definitely worth it. So we're really growing our teaching and learning with our coaches. We have onsite an ELA and math coach, and hopefully Anna will be joining us as a Rhode Island Reads coach. So that's really exciting with our coaching. And our coaching is also working on high-level student discourse, which is part of our PD sessions. And let's see what else we have. Our CTT is dedicated every other week to looking at student data internally and then moving that process forward. And we collaborate, we're meeting as a team. If it's a third-grade team or a fourth-grade team, they're meeting together to collaborate across the grade level, which is very powerful, very powerful. Took a lot of scheduling to do that, but it's working. And we are using our curricula HMH, our math and our science. We really need to support science this year. And I think that's it for walking tools. Do you want to?
So for the, we started using a walk-through last year. Just kind of give us a way to quickly take some data. And so this year, we tweaked a little bit during the instructional rounds of KMS. I stole Benes's. And we, but we actually just, we used that as a starting point. I really liked the idea that it was based on the teacher evaluation rubric, I'd say. But then we wanted to get a little bit of, you know, buy-in and support from faculty, too, because we'd also like to get teachers doing some walkthroughs during CTT time. So we asked them some feedback on the tool itself. So I've got, I've been getting some, so I shared that with what we have. I shared that with them, and I'm getting some feedback from teachers, too, so that, you know, it's something that we're all kind of building and working on together. And we'll use that, we'll share that information, you know, with teachers, as we do, you know, our walkthroughs, you know, just day-to-day. But then also get the teachers involved in it so that we can, you know, kind of build that culture, you know, of, you know, kind of sharing and learning together.
Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Colt Andrews? Start on my right with Ms. Richards.
Hi. So first, as someone with direct experience in the school, because I have three kids there, thank you so much for, I think, you know, from my kids' perspective, from what I've seen, I think, bringing together the students and the families and stuff like that. So far, so far, so good, feels good. I think the culture and all that, that feels really good. And so I appreciate that, that's no small effort of reorganizing and moving around. And so I appreciate that a lot. And so Keith mentioned this a little bit, but when, you know, I always say, when you look at the average of everything, you get the exact measure of nothing. And so when we look at the data, three to five, or even the earlier side's three to eight, that really doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't tell us, doesn't give us much to do. Because it's not giving, you know, it's kind of relying on this average. Like, yeah, we've kind of changed overall. What are our targeted strategies? And, you know, I think there's a lot here, and I appreciate that. But I'd like to hear a little bit more about how, like, you know, how you're differentiating between the grade levels. So for example, if you just, you won't be surprised, no, I spend a lot of time looking at the data, because I always do. When you look at the ELA scores, for example, between the two schools, third grade shot up, fourth and fifth grade both shot down. So there was, you know, and even within that, you know, what we're concerned about is obviously students and individual teachers. So we don't have the information publicly to say, okay, was that because of one super-high-performing classroom? And to super, you know, other performing, you know, low, low classrooms? Like, I don't see enough of the variation. So I guess you could, especially since some of your, the approach here, you talk about coaching support to new or transitional teachers. I'm wondering, could you talk a little bit more about, like, the differentiation by grade level? And also, like, is the, how does the, how do I say this in a succinct way? When you compare last year to schools this year, the one school, how does our kind of proportion of new or transitional teachers compare from last year, what we had to this year? Do we have a lot more new teachers, a lot more teachers who are teaching different grades than in previous? And also, the staffing to support that in terms of the coaching levels? Like, are we up or down, or?
So we don't have many new or transitional teachers. It's, that came over to Geteris.
We just, and yeah, how does the level, I'm trying to think back to the budgeting and all of that, the level of staff that are there available, or consultants or whoever, to support teachers and students? How does that change from last year?
See, so I, you know, we haven't had the data for a really long time. But we have definitely been using the data that we have to decide on who is getting the coaching this year. And, you know, we still have, you know, we're still doing a lot of digging into the data to, and also kind of looking at our resources to see where that's best going to be. And we've had it for, like, maybe a week, you know, the data show. But it's, I wouldn't say it's, you know, a finished, you know, project. Yeah, but yeah.
But terms of coaching support, I guess, I can't, I'm going to remind, I can't remember. Do you have the same amount as you had before? You'd say, like, between the two schools, or do you have a little?
We, right, we have one more because of the grants.
Okay.
That we have.
Okay.
And we also have two tutors, two volunteers. One who worked with us last year at Geteris, who was fantastic. And another one who I've talked to, who just grades perfect. Zach Ratchek come through.
We have our pre-practice students from minority districts in the classroom. That started this week, so that's exciting. And, but like I said before, we're seeing, going by the model where newer transitional teachers are often the two, I mean, the coaching first, the four cycles, that's. And then other teachers that may be based on data, or ones to choose that. I wanted to include a cycle for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah. I just had to quit.
Ms. Rich.
First of all, well done. And I'm sure blending a school is no easy task. And to maintain and not only improve culture in that process, I think is really wonderful and commendable. So, so thank you for your hard work in the school blending. I also wanted just to ask a follow-up question. You said you would change the terminology to acceleration block. I just wanted to point out that I think that that was a wonderful change. I mean, words are so important, and perception is important. And changing sort of the narrative from, like, a remediation to an acceleration, I think is a subtle, but a really important difference. I just wanted to highlight it. I think that's wonderful. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Almeida.
Thank you so much for your information. I know you stated that you have some volunteers for tutoring. Is that after-school hours, during school? Okay, so during school, correct. So that's in the classroom or outside of the classroom, in another room, however it works. But what benefits have you seen with those volunteer tutors working directly with the students in the classroom?
Yeah, I mean, typically, they work with, last year, they were working during that acceleration block. And it was really, it changed quite a bit. So it was based on whatever the teachers' needs were. I mean, it's all, it's all based on the curriculum. They're not, you know, it's not worksheets and things like that, you know? So they're utilizing them to help them with, you know, the other parts, you know, with the parts of the curriculum.
So my question is, though, what benefit have you seen with the student? Like, has there been a lot of benefits? Has the students thrived with these volunteer tutors inside the classroom?
I don't have the data to look at, like, how those same teachers and those students did last, the year before. You know, it's just tough, tough to get any kind of, I mean, I know the teachers really appreciated the tutors. But as far as, like, data to support that they helped, it's more anecdotal than I think, you know, than I, you know. It's just, I don't know where I would get that kind of data. You know what I mean?
I do, I was just thinking, like, increased scores, increased grades. I didn't know if there were, if anyone was keeping track of the kids prior to the tutors and then after the tutors. So I just had the question, but thank you.
The tutors aren't, they're not spending a lot of time. You know, I think they're coming once or twice a week.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Richards.
Yeah, sorry, I have a, just a clarification about pulling up on Ms. Rich's question, because the acceleration blocks, I've been, my understanding in the past, it seems like the acceleration blocks are kind of being used as a catch-all for everything. It's, they're being used, it sounds like, to help students level up and improve where they need to. But I've also been told that the acceleration blocks are where the students who are kind of be more challenging are also getting their enrichment, when we talked about enrichment policy. That's what's happening there. That's a lot for a teacher to do with 24 kids. And so I'm just wondering, can you also talk a little bit more about for the kids who are coming in, you know, that are coming in above grade level? Because we do have, you know, many of them. Kind of how are those, how is that being? What are the strategies that will help them continue to achieve?
Well, even with math, it's the representative report, so that takes you to where they are. And it will, it will. And it will, it will, I've been driving that level. So that's the differentiation piece, the mathematics, the teachers look at those before, during, and during the TSS, and that drives acceleration.
And is that, sorry, is that just using iReady, or is that using other instruction as well?
I read.
So, so there's, so the, so the opportunities for children to receive to, or above, is only through iReady? So they're not getting any personal instruction at their level? That's concerning, that's concerning to me, if that's how it is. I get it, it's resources challenging, but.
Yes. But it's, it's from iReady. It's, we're using the prerequisite reports, it could be, it's.
It determines, right?
Exactly.
So they're just learning on the computer by themselves?
No, that's what she, that drives the groups. So then the teacher works with different groups on different days.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
I'm sorry, she was, she thought you meant, what tool are they using to decide?
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I mean, what are they doing during that time?
Then the teacher works with different groups every day.
They're not just iReady all the time. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, she's not instructing all the kids every day. She takes the different groups based on.
Got it, okay, thank you. Okay. Yes, okay. Thank you.
So our next school is Hugh Cole.
And so I, we'll let everyone just know that Mr. Grimsy went to Block Island this weekend, and then no ferries ran yesterday, so he's trapped on Block Island. So, thank you, Renee, for stepping in to present their data. But yes, so just, that's why he's not here. Otherwise, he would be here. But he texts me first thing this morning in a panic that the ferries were not running yesterday.
So I'm excited to hand this over to Assistant Principal McDougall.
And you get to give the good news, Renee, it's perfect.
That bottom star, I added it to an older version, please don't kill me. So there is a star missing. I know she has a lot to celebrate. Here you go.
We emailed her about the star.
Okay, so we are very pleased with the recent assessment results at Hugh Cole School. As you can see, our ELA Rycast scores increased by 12%, representing a double-digit gain. In math, while not as high, our proficiency rate still increased by 4%. And you can see that with the one star. And this is not up there, but our proficiency levels in the 24-25 school year on Rycast have now outpaced our pre-pandemic proficiency rates in both ELA and math. And then on our local assessment, which is iReady, we also saw some nice growth. We increased proficiency by 3% in ELA and 10% in math. Now I will provide an overview of our net steps. So first bullet, we're working on to better align our coaches, professional learning, walkthrough protocol, and common planning time to create a cohesive, data-driven system. Next, we will make our CTT more focused by identifying students below grade level, determining small group interventions with the right progress monitoring tools, tracking their growth, and deciding on net steps together at each meeting. Last year, our walkthrough tool worked well. This year, we're shifting the focus to student engagement with an emphasis on student talk versus teacher talk. And we also got that from Dennis when we went to KMS to do our walkthrough. In regards to our professional learning plan, we are developing a cohesive plan for the year. For example, our first PD session at Hugh Cole focused on engagement strategies with our math coach modeling key approaches. We revisited the walkthrough tool to reinforce student engagement as a priority and conducted with a, and concluded with a data review. Each session will intentionally reconnect with our main goals to maintain alignment and sustain focus. Finally, we are committed to aligning our school improvement plan with our key goals and initiatives. This year, we also plan to improve teacher morale, and it does feel like we're moving in the right direction. We will continue collaborating with grade level leaders to strengthen communication between teachers and administration. And we are committed to celebrating teachers, fostering better communication, and providing stronger behavioral support throughout the building.
Any questions for Ms. McDougall?
Just, not a question, just a comment. Great work here, and I love the connection that you made to the teacher morale and engagement strategies that Courtney spoke to earlier. And I've heard about the work that you guys are going to do there. And I think with that support, like, I'm excited to see what happens this year.
Thank you.
Ms. Piper.
Yes, congratulations. This is extremely exciting. As someone who first walked through the doors of Hugh Cole School, now 15 years ago, because I'm a old lady, but since I got involved at Hugh Cole School, of course, at least from a parent perspective, it's been this constant, why is Hugh Cole the elementary school that's always struggling? And none of the sort of theories that at least parents come up with make any sense in terms of the facts and the data. What has happened? I mean, I see what you're saying, you're going to push more next year. Is this list also the sort of reflection of what you have focused on this year? Is this the sort of catalyst that has changed everything?
I think so. Definitely, we focus more on coaching within our classrooms, and we have some really strong coaches in our building. So we've seen a lot of results from that. Like we talked about last year, we've also really, with our walkthrough tool, tried to reinforce the importance of implementing the high-quality curriculum, and that's been a focus for us. So that's another, something that we've really focused on. I think there's been more consistency in administration, so there was a big turnover throughout the years. And now, you know, we're here to stay, and we have our goals, and we're sticking to those, those goals with our staff. And we're also really trying to utilize the CTT time that we have, the common planning time with teachers, to really think about our focus and where we're moving. So it's just bringing everything together and being consistent with that.
It's amazing. Congratulations. Keep doing it.
Ms. Richards.
Hi. So I am, you know, picking on the data a little bit more this year than I did last year's, you know. So just looking at the Rycast scores, my earlier, you know, kind of point of differentiation, fifth grade's kicking butt in both tracks. And over several years, it's been continuous growth over the last couple of years in ELA and in math. And that's accounting for all of the improvement in the, in the math scores. And with, you know, for ELA, like, we've seen, there's improvements in third and, in fifth grade, I'm sorry, third and fourth grade, but that's after a drop from last year. So do you, like, what do you, you know, what are your thoughts on, I guess, what is that differentiation? Like, what is fifth grade doing that's so great that other grades can or have been learning from? Where do you think maybe there's like, why is that big, why that big difference? Because to me, that jumps out.
Yeah. So we do have very strong fifth grade teachers. And like Keith mentioned, when he was talking about these scores, we had a third grade cohort where we had some long-term teachers, long-term, like, one-year, long-term substitute teachers for the year. And I think that that affected the data in some ways. So I think that when you have a teacher that's been there for, you know, for a few years, and is more familiar with the curriculum, and has exposure to the coaching, over time, that their scores are better. So this year in third grade, we don't have that same situation. So we're hoping that our scores will improve even more, having more teachers with more experience in those positions.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Our next school is Rockwell Elementary, so Principal McAuliffe will share her data and next steps.
Both the best and the worst thing about being the last elementary school is that they say all the good stuff. But we'll try to, try to rock it. We are pretty much a 3% in ELA, and the same in math. However, that math is still pretty strong, looking at some of our neighboring schools. We're really going to focus on ELA this year. It has to be writing. I am excited that we have a dedicated writing coach, because we're definitely going to need to do work on the very specific type of writing that they're asking for on these assessments. You can see in our iReady that our math pretty much matches, and it matches every year, but our reading scores do not. And I believe that's because there's no writing component in iReady. And I think if, if there was a writing component, or we added another component there, we'd get a pretty much more, a more realistic look at what that writing predictable would be for the outcome of the Rycast. Some of our next steps are similar to things that other people have said. We're definitely focusing on teacher discourse. We had the PD last week on it, and some great discussion came up. And it's really about teachers not just providing information to students, but to get them to think deeper, and to come up with those connections themselves. And that creates even more thinking. And that's really what we're looking for. And that's, you know, it sounds simple, but it really is very difficult when a student maybe says, you know, I don't know, to a question, to kind of hang in there until they are spurred to say something a little more, and to, by your questioning, to kind of deepen that, and not jump in and provide it. And my teachers are awesome, and they can learn this too, to just not be quite as forthcoming with everything, to let kids come to their own place in that learning. And I think that is really one of the keys to, to kind of advancing this. So we're really hoping that that message gets across. And so we're using also that walkthrough tool, which looks at teacher talk time, student talk time, and the level of questioning and discourse. And that's important. And we can find that in our curriculums, we just have to know when to apply it. So I think that that is kind of our key there. And continue to work on the different kinds of engagement, behavioral, emotional, and cognitive. And that cognitive is part of that discourse. I think that's it. And we do have IE blocks, and we've had them for maybe 10 years, acceleration slash enrichment. And so when I have anybody in my building who has any spare blocks, they are assigned to a classroom to go in and provide enrichment at the teacher's direction to kids. So I think somebody had a question about, is it just, you know, intervention? No, it is also enrichment. And it might be a book discussion, or a different kind of study. In the math, that's a little more iReady-directed, but in ELA, it has a little more differentiation to that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Donovan.
Mine doesn't necessarily go to Rockwell only. It was pretty consistent across the board in all the elementary schools that the science all noticeably dropped. So I guess I leave to anyone who wants to answer. But are there any sort of theories or variables that?
It looked like that across the elementary in the state. I don't know why. I find mystery science to be very engaging. And my fifth grade teacher had a science background last year, and she usually gets, you know, really great results. So I'm not sure why that little dip, but it was pretty consistent among schools. So, I mean, sometimes it's just the, the nature of what the test was. I mean, hard to tell.
I don't know, fifth grade was the COVID kindergarten, because I had one. I don't know if that's a factor.
The fifth grade, in my cohort, the fifth grade rocked it, and the third grade did not. So they did more to bring those scores up as far as, I think they were like 83% in, in math, which is like, that's pre-COVID. I mean, that's amazing. But other cohorts were closer in the, in the 50s range. So then that gives you a kind of a 60-something average there.
Thank you.
Ms. Richards.
Yeah, so building on that, the same, the same question I asked before, your, your fifth grades are in both, I'm just looking at the Rycast, the ELA and the math are doing great, showing great improvement. The other grade is not so much. So what is, what is going, so what's going great in the, in the fifth grade?
It's a strong cohort. It really is. You can thank me next year, Dennis.
The teachers or the students?
Students.
Students. Because that's another thing I was really.
I mean, the teachers are strong too. I don't feel anybody's, but, you know, things are just different from years to years. We're definitely going to be working on writing in that third grade and in fourth grade as well. That, that was definitely the weak link there.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the middle school, I do want to say, I'm hearing a pattern too, when questions are being asked and answered, I'm hearing you all say the strength of the cohort or the team, and it really drives home that point. It's people and not programs. And I really want that to be the focus of our work, and I do believe that will make the difference. So moving on to Kick Em Uit, also has a lot to celebrate, come on up, Principal Morell and Clifford.
But I do have her magic purple books. I did take that. I did take that. So, thank you, everybody. So yes, we do have some things to celebrate, and I want to share some more information, because I did do a deeper dive into the data. So as you can see, we went up seven percentage points in reading, three percentage points in math. And again, like the elementary schools, we dropped five in science. We did have, one of the eighth-grade science teachers was out for an extended period of time due to illness. We had a substitute in there. I don't know, I'd have to look at the individual student grade reports to get any more information on that. And then our local assessment results are iReady, we were pretty stagnant across the board. But before I get into the next steps, a couple of things I'd like to share. So when I stood before you in June, and I was giving you my cautious optimism about this cohort, we talk about cohort of kids. So I don't know if you remember, last year, we had a number of seventh graders who missed the cutoff the previous year by one point, by two points. So we did a little differentiation. So we target the students at this end of the spectrum. So we targeted those students at the high ends of the spectrum. And I am happy to tell you, where is my favorite, that when we look at those individual, that cohort of students, so last year, when they were in the sixth grade, students that were meeting or exceeding standards were at 34%. And last year, they rose up to 49%. So that's just that one cohort of kids, targeted instruction, differentiation. And in, that was in math. In, in reading, last year, they were at 46%, and they rose to almost 54%. So that was just that one grade. So like, some of my colleagues were saying, what brought off, what brought down our overall scores was another cohort of kids that, I don't know what happened. I truly don't know what happened, but they dropped in every area. But some highlights was that, were that, that same, my current eighth graders, we reduced the number of students in half that were three or more years below in reading. So we dropped, we, so I said, we increased them a year or two, and reduced by, by 50%. So that's a lot of things you don't get, just looking at the reports in general. And so what we did was, when we go to our next steps, these were some of the things that we did and will continue to do, is that we are currently preparing an item analysis. We go through each of the questions, and we identify where the weak spots, the weak spots are according to the standards, and show areas of need. And then we target those standards in the, within the curriculum. And we're continuing to use that data to improve our core instruction. And we're going to keep looking at those individual students and see where those kids are who are so close to proficiency, by creating these opportunities within our curriculum for them to just work on getting over that home. And it proved successful this year, so we're really proud of that. And we're still doing our data chats with the students, and we will be using, looking at the areas of need and targeting that instruction with the teachers through professional development. We found that doing the data analysis, with the item analysis, rather, with the teachers was really, was really powerful, because they can see where they're actually lacking. because they can see where they're actually lacking within the, within the curriculum. But there was a couple of, couple of highlights that Michelle Clifford put together for me. And we're going to, we're trying to figure out a way how to highlight these things because nobody, everybody's embarrassed of being, hey, you did a great job. So we're trying to do it, we're going to do it privately, but, you know. I had one of mine, one of my seventh grade ELA teachers was almost at 58% of her kids were exceeding standard, meeting or exceeding standards. So she's almost at that 75, and she's well on her way. And I had another math teacher at 55% of his students in seventh grade were meeting or exceeding standards. And it's, it's great across the board, but like 48.9%, 50%, 50%. So when you look at the individual teacher data and how they're doing with their kids, it's a greater reflection than, than some of these numbers. And to jump on Courtney's bandwagon, it's all about people. So like, when we look at these numbers, we see kids' faces and teachers' faces. And so thank you for putting this all together. But we're, first thing we're going to do is celebrate because we feel like with these kids, they, they need to be celebrated. I can't compare my sixth graders because it's too cumbersome to look through all the elementary data and try to put it together. And, but next year I get another chance because I'll have the fifth grade next year. And with that said, I want to go to my next slide while I'm, so I just wanted to give you a real quick update on the fifth grade transition. That's what's happening with us. So I have formed a transition team. We, and those are the people that are on the team, listed in the bullets. And we met twice, once in July, once in August. They volunteered, came, came to KMS. We had two very productive meetings. We will continue to meet in, at our next school committee meeting in November. Anna gave me a free ticket to come to present the full.
It's not even principal's month.
It's not even principal's month, and I can't wait to spend that time with you guys. But if you go to the next.
But, but really important, just back to that slide, is a reminder that next year, the middle school data will have a whole other cohort of students, and it'll be five to eight. So when we see the average for middle school, it's something that I have on my list to talk to ride about because they usually overlap two years of data when they do our accountability report card. So just as last year, we had to notice them in December, that Geteris was closing so they could come off of accountability. We will have to notice them in December. That fifth grade will be at the middle school, and they'll have to realign the, the data for middle school or their report card. They might get a one-year temporary report card because they won't have two years of data to reflect on. So I'll find out from Ride when, when we meet with them, what that will look like, but that will have an impact on the, on the middle school data.
Yeah, and it also means that we'll have close to 800 students.
Right.
Altogether, so.
All the testers.
All, all the testers. Science in fifth and eighth. It's going to be fun. Yeah.
Celebration.
So I just wanted to give you a quick update where we are with the building, and I mean really quick. So this is the configuration of what the first floor is going to look like. So, so you, so you know, I do have the right amount of furniture. Those rooms were empty, but they had furniture in them, so everything is up to date. And the rooms that are highlighted in green on this, this is the first floor, floor plan, excuse me. Green is grade six. The light yellow or the tan is grade five. And in the corner, those three rooms are the new art rooms that we had the $100,000 grant to reconfigure the art rooms. And so that's in that corner there. And on the second floor, the purple is grade eight, the blue is grade seven. And then I took three rooms from downstairs because we're putting in a new STEM lab with another $100,000 grant that we got. So I had to move the health rooms upstairs. So we are, we're, we're on the, the right track. So just to give you an idea, but I will have a more detailed presentation for you in November.
May I ask you a question before you leave the podium?
You have to ask the audible people.
Well, he wasn't looking at me, so I have a question for you. I didn't think I was going to have a chance to ask something, but since it's in the slide, I would like to ask a question regarding the planning team that you have for our fifth grade. First of all, though, great job with the presentation of the increase of the scores and the individual teachers that you mentioned. So that was great to hear as well. And I know everything is in the early stages for the planning, and I know there's more meetings to come, but I wanted to ask you publicly and early on, so it doesn't get, you know, put towards the bottom. I know there's a lot of community members that are concerned, the fifth graders potentially losing recess when they go to the middle school. I did speak to our superintendent. She knows I'm very concerned about that, being a parent of current fourth graders going to the fifth grade. And so I know, again, very early on, she, Anna, said that, you know, they're going through maybe either recess or an extra elective, and that's still a discussion. So suggestions were thrown out on a whim, and I didn't know how you felt about potentially at some point maybe surveying the elementary, the current fourth grade parents or just elementary that will eventually go up to fifth grade, what they think would be the best interest of their kids. And then whatever that majority is, maybe that can be a serious discussion point with you and, you know, whoever's planning with you. I didn't know what your thoughts are about that.
I'd be happy to take that to my transition team. I can't make that decision. I don't want to make that decision by myself, a unilateral decision. I can bring it forward to the team and discuss it. I will tell you that we've had some preliminary discussions about that with the, the whole transition team. And we're really focusing on all of the opportunities that they will have at the middle school that they currently don't have in the elementary school. Like, we are expanding our STEM classes. Those are my most popular classes. They're all, not all, but 75% of those classes are at cap because everybody wants to be in the STEM class. So we're working on increasing that. We're looking at writing grants to secure funding. And there are other opportunities that are available to them, but I would, I would bring it, I will bring it to my team and see where we go from there.
I appreciate it.
No, no worries. That's what we do.
Ms. Richards?
Related question and way to distract from talking about data. Because I also, I, I think actually almost half, a lot of us have fourth graders that are, that are sitting here, and Megan's not here. So I know, I guess adding on to somebody's question, are, do you plan to add parents to this transition? I've had a lot of parents already ask me if, if their parents are going to be.
Not at this time because we're still in the preliminary phases. But we are working on preparing a community presentation probably in the winter, January or so, after the holidays, to give the community an update as to where we are. I mean.
I, I just, based on the, what I've already heard from people, I, and, and thinking about how transition was with Geteris and some of the concerns that Geteris families had about the lack of, the communication challenges in moving. I just, I, I would, my, my suggestion is early and often as possible.
Well, I will tell you that my assistants, Mrs. Clifford included, tell me that I tend to over-communicate and I overshare. But I'll have, it's all going to be presented. I'm going to have more than one night where we'll get together at Kikimewit in the auditorium, and we'll have the whole, it's not as, it's not as challenging as one would think it is because most middle schools in the state are five to eight in how they structure and how the curriculum. And we're in a pretty good place right now at KMS as far as logistics, as far as the building. We have a great building. It's in great shape. We have more than enough classrooms. We still have more, all those white classrooms are still available. It's.
I, I, I'm, I'm excited about it. Honestly, from my, I really am. I just think, even just what you just said, there's going to be parents sitting around wondering the answers to those questions that you said that are already a non-issue, that are already, of course we have space. Of course we have this, the, just the, the separation of the, of the grades, the, the layout is something people ask me about a lot, just as parents. So I guess that's, I'm just even getting out the, like, the easy ones.
Well, in November, you're, you're in for a big surprise.
Okay, good.
Mr. Morel's coming back to present the whole.
Yeah, okay. I think, okay, good. Thank you.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Morel.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and great work as well. And maybe this is kind of your opinion, but thinking about the challenge and then possible opportunities for growth in science, do you see an advantage? Because, you know, one of the tests is fifth, like now that we have fifth grade together, common planning for teachers, maybe my assumption is possibly a little more science-focused classrooms, like possibly with the sink. Do you think that this is an opportunity to maybe over the next few years see?
Most of my classrooms have sinks. I will, I will tell you that. Don't know why, but, yes. So we're having this conversation at my admin team meeting that having the fifth grade there now from, I mean, all those teachers will now have the same built-in common planning department time, like my current sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers have. So they will have that time to work with the science coordinator within the building as well. Her office is in my building when she comes back. And now that the curriculum, they will be using Open Saiad. We've been piloting now for two years. We're in the second or third. Yeah. And I'm looking at extended time for science in the fifth grade schedule as well. And again, you'll find out in November.
Thank you very much. So just to confirm, we are moving fifth grade to Kikimewit Middle School next year.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And certainly, last but not least, Principal King.
Never offended at being the last one. I'm actually going to move ahead for a moment, and I'm actually going to do our end-of-the-year assessment results in comparison first and then jump back to this year's beginning-of-the-year data, if that's okay. So a couple of things, when we look at, what you see on this slide is beginning, end-of-the-year assessment data, two-year comparison for English and math. And again, that's a distance. But I will say this, in English, we saw an increase in students who either meet or exceed the standard or proficiency of 14.5%, ranking us fourth in the state of Rhode Island at this point. No small task. And then same for math in the sense that we saw an 8% increase in proficiency for students who meet or exceed the standard, ranking us statewide as number 12 in the state. And that was just a spread she shared with me this morning. So I will just say that I was very happy to have that information, to be able to share that with you all tonight. Now, different, although not on this slide, is our NGSA scores. And so I am very pleased to share that the high school has seen a 10% increase in our science assessment scores, increasing from 58% to 68%. And just for context, the state average is 32%. So just kind of putting that out there is, we're very proud of our science department and those results. So I, well, I'm not biased or anything, but, so backtrack. So now for something a little bit different, as I always say. So a couple of things. The high school, you're going to notice that we don't have grade nine beginning-of-the-year data yet, and that is because we're in our third year of implementing the PSAT 9, which the testing window opened in October. We gave the assessment on October 8th, and hopefully we'll have the results within the next week or two. Typically, now that it's digital, the turnaround's pretty quick, but it wasn't quick enough for tonight. So the beginning-of-the-year data, you're going to look at math specifically and some of the ELA is really derived from locally developed assessments. As we had said back several years ago, the STAR test was really not aligning to the SAT and the expectations. So we've developed assessments at all grade levels for beginning and mid-year, as well as end-of-year, that align based on what we know about the SAT and what is assessed. So there are the results here, and what you're looking at is beginning-of-the-year grade 10 and 11. And actually, grade 12, we are using end-of-year SAT results to drive the instruction for our seniors in math. Specifically because, and I'll get into it with our next steps, we are able to identify band scores and really identify where the gaps exist. And then jumping to English, I will tell you, the beginning-of-the-year English is a little bit misleading, and that is because I do not have beginning-of-the-year assessment data. They're still finishing up correcting and getting tho, that, that stuff culled for us. So what we have here is end-of-year grade nine. So that is a local assessment, end-of-year grade nine, just to give us a sense of where they were, grade nine level as they entered 10th grade. Grade 11 is the beginning-of-the-year benchmarking, and then grade 12, we're continuing to use the SAT and of grade 11 as the sort of jumping off point for grade 12 instruction. So then, when we look at what are we doing, I think there's a couple of things I want to point out. First, I think it's important to note growth. And why is growth so important? And, and for us at the high school, and I think in general, but at the high school, growth is really important because it compares students' assessment data from test to test. So we're really able to see the student assessed against themselves, PSAT to SAT. And that growth data is important because it also illustrates our responsiveness to the data that we're seeing and how a student grows. And so just for a little bit of information in the two-year comparison, I take, took a look at that. For math, two-year comparison, class of 25, we had 75% of our students showing typical or high growth. Class of 26, current seniors in math, 82% are showing typical or high growth. So that's, that's significant. In ELA, comparatively, we had 87% of our students showing typical or high growth for the class of 25, and 88.4% are showing typical or high growth still for the class of 26, our current seniors. Growth scores place us fifth in the state for math and 15th in the state for ELA. So just again, for some context, what are we doing with the data? And I think it's really important to highlight what Assistant Superintendent Montesari said, is that it is really about the people. And our professional development at the high school over the last two years, we've been working to really develop sort of a coherent string of development that's really focused on a learner-centered classroom. And why? Because that is a classroom that increases student engagement and increases deeper learning. And so last year, our focus was on active engagement and participation. And this year, through teacher surveys at the end of last year, our focus is now on adapting to student needs, which really looks at identifying prior knowledge and misconceptions and formative assessment and flexible learning environment. And so our PD is really designed around that in mind. We started our classroom walkthroughs two years ago. This will be our third year of really working through that process, and we've really fine-tuned it to now focus on one of those key concepts or key aspects of a learner-centered classroom. And we're really striving to build a culture of open classrooms. We are now having teachers volunteer to present at our professional development sessions. We had two teachers just this past week share strategies on adapting to student needs. We're also working to have teachers lead their own learning walk and open up classrooms to one another. And again, if we can continue to build that culture and that sort of positive camaraderie, right? Sharing strategies and best practices, that's how we're going to get there and continue to improve. But about the data, one of the things that's really important is the SAT and the PSAT, we're able to get band scores. And what that really tells us, each component of each assessment, where within that assessment did we either fall down or do well? And with those band scores, our professional learning time is targeting those areas. And so what we've added to this year is our associate principal spending time in those departmental PLTs, talking with department chairs and teachers, ensuring that the discussion about the data is elevated to a point that they're actually action-oriented. So that's where we are, and that's where we're going.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions for Principal King. Ms. Piper?
Thank you. This is also great. It's, I've said to you before that to me, I'm with you, the growth number is the one that's so important. We get the kids we get, right? That's the beauty of public education. So watching how they're growing is to me a much more fair assessment of how we're serving those kids.
Yes, and we'll be able to now really look at nine, 10, and 11 this coming year. So once we get that nine result, we can really show it over.
Right. I think it's great. But my question was, and it's. Right. I think it's great. But my question was, and it's a clarification, and correct me if I'm wrong, in, for example, beginning of your math, grade 10, it says 144 kids are not meeting expect, grade level expectations. Now, I believe that number means they're not meeting the expectations we have for them by the end of grade 10.
Correct.
Because I think that's very important because without that context, this looks like something really bad happened in the summer.
It does look distressing. And I will say it's a little bit lower than previous, than last year. So I will put that there. But correct, that is these beginning of the year, specifically in math, because 10 and 11 were true beginning of the year local assessments, they are based on end of year expectations.
And that's the same for all of the data that we saw. I think that's really important because.
That's what I was just going to say. That's true for the.
Right. Because otherwise, it looks like that these kids had started to excel the year before and now they're starting after.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
Right. So that, I think that's really important context for anybody who's.
Right. And again, when you look at math, we're going from algebra in grade nine for most to geometry in grade 10. So it's a very different concept altogether.
I think it's, I think that's really important, yeah, to show that.
Thank you for that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Jackson?
I'm just going to put an asterisk to fourth place in the state in ELA. Technically, you're third because classical requires a test.
Agreed.
To get in there.
Agreed.
I'm not sure where classical fell on that list. Did you look? I know. Newton is number one, actually, if I'm not mistaken.
And they were two. They were, they were above us, so we're not counting.
They just got, so I will take a look, but okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? So in terms of the rest of our presentation that you have a copy of, the appendix has a lot of the information that we showed in table form, just in different, it's the same information, just some visuals and how close we are or are getting to that proficiency goal. And if you'd like more information on any of the assessments that we give, we did include some links in terms of the Department of Ed and also how it relates to achievement, how achievement relates to chronic absenteeism. So, any final questions?
Ms. Almeida?
I do. Thank you so much. I actually have three questions. So first, I appreciate that being so new to the district, you seem to already be fully engaged with all the building principals. And I've heard directly from, and I told you personally, but I want to say it publicly, I've heard from one of the elementary schools, a handful of the teachers that they saw you in the building and they, they welcome you with open arms. So that was great to hear. I also appreciate that you acknowledge that over the past several years, as you stated, the scores have been similar. Again, not exact, there's been a little bit of growth here, maybe a decline here, but overall, they've been somewhat similar, which to me tells me that potentially the current practices at hand may not be as productive as once thought, or maybe in theory. So I know you had mentioned very briefly that one of your plans would include coaches, but we've had coaches over the past few years. And I don't see specific data, any increase that we had. I don't see, or there's no proof that it was directly from the coaches. So I just didn't know if there was any thought of either reallocating resources or additional specialists or more professionals directly working inside the classroom, which is why I asked when, I think it was Cole Andrews or Guterres, I'm sorry, I forget, the team, when they had the volunteer tutors, if there were any benefits or increases. Because typically, statistically, when there's more help in the classroom directly to the students, that's where you usually see more benefit or more growth. So I didn't know if you and our superintendent did think of putting more professionals with the actual students. And I know that's a very deep question, but that's, and you don't have to necessarily answer that. That's more of a, not a suggestion, but have, what has that been in your thought process? Also, any thoughts specifically with the elementary level of fully taking Chromebook learning away altogether? And I'm, I'm, for those of you who have watched these meetings, not that I am anti-technology because I do think it's important to keep up technologies not going away. However, there, it has been proven in their statistics that especially the elementary level, pencil and paper is what makes the best foundation for learning. I am not a fan of the Chromebooks at all, big surprise, I'm sorry, but I am not. So I also want to know if that's something in a thought process as well, elementary level, that specifically for, you know, up till fifth grade or potentially fourth grade, because now our elementary, but I just wanted to hear some thoughts. If you had any, no pressure, if it's something you're not ready to answer, but I just wanted to throw those out there.
No, I'm glad you ask these questions. They're super easy like questions, right? No, to be, yeah, I love the questions because actually, these are the topics that Superintendent Riley and I started discussing from the moment I started. You know, I was a reading coach prior to being an administrator several years ago, and I know what coaching looked like in my prior district. And I'm learning now what coaching is structured to look like here. And one of the first things I have committed to doing is to look at the way we're utilizing our coaches and try to track the impact. I can use one school as an example, Hugh Cole, Principal Grimsy, when I first met with him, sat down, and I don't remember specifics, but I do remember he showed me some of the results from teachers who directly worked with a coach last year and how their achievement had increased over years prior. So one of the things we're trying to do is really identify district-wide need in the elementary schools. For example, we looked at RICAS data. We met last week, we determined third grade writing for ELA, second grade subtraction. We always want to work with new and transitioning teachers. And so that's where our next cycle for coaches will focus. And what we're also doing is creating just a district tracker so we can track at each school which teacher is engaged in a coaching cycle and we can follow the data and see, are we getting a return on this investment? Because like you, I think that more services directly working with students are also beneficial. But as we saw with that data too, you know, what is the change? It's not that we need a new program necessarily. It's not that we need a different block. Is it really just, you know, students, this job? Everything has changed since the pandemic. So what are we doing, you know, in terms of our human capital and growing professionally? And that's where our coach can really come in as such a great direct support. It's one-on-one personalized professional learning. So I'm trying to figure out, as I learn the district and observe and support the teaching and learning team, where are we getting the best return on our investment? How are coaching cycles determined? What is the result? Is it supporting teacher growth and student achievement? Because that's something we need to track. It's only been, I guess, six weeks of school started. So I only have so much data, but it is something I am hugely focused on. What was the second, the last question?
Technology. And I know that's not necessarily a decision you can make solely, but I just, I just feel like pencil, paper, no Chromebooks, because when my kids are doing Chromebook work with math, then when they go to paper, they're having a difficult time because usually on the Chromebook, there's multiple choice. So the answer is there. And I, I am very old school when it comes to that. I want them to know how to do things manual. I know the direction of technology. So most likely, there's really never going to be potentially a reason they need to do something manually. But if they know, if they're learning that at elementary level, their brain is just going to be wired a different way. And I feel like they can only benefit. And like I said, there's been so much proven, even just with screen time, it also can help with, I know, I think it was Ms. McCullough that was saying that, you know, cognitive and emotional is, is up there as well. And screen time has a direct effect with emotional, whether that's just screen time in general, it doesn't matter how it's being used, but screen time in general. So I just wanted to hear a thought process about, I don't know, take it, really, like just taking Chromebook learning out of elementary school 100%.
All right. So that's something I, as a building principal, had a big opinion on in terms of, I understand technology is the future. It's here to stay. There's several jobs our students will be eligible for in the future where they need to be, you know, digitally literate and I, and all of that. However, like you, I don't like to see students sitting and being, you know, just sucked into technology when they're not directly working with a teacher. I feel like that is such a drain on students. And my personal philosophy on small group instruction, if a teacher has three groups, let's just say, in their classroom, they're directly working with one, one group should be on technology and one group should be doing something where they're creating or working together off technology, applying their learning. Not all classrooms will have three groups. I know where I used to work, I had, as a teacher, four, sometimes five groups, but just as an example, you really don't want students sitting on technology the entire time. They're not directly getting instructed in small group by a teacher. I do see, not just in Bristol Warren, just again, my previous district, I see a lot of classrooms where technology is used in that way. And they're on one app or an intervention or another app to take a diagnostic. And it is a lot, then they go home and oftentimes they either continue to practice or they go on other games or sites. So it's definitely something that I do feel strongly about, as you do, that they should not spend so much time on tech. But I don't, I don't know if the future would ever involve wiping out Chromebooks totally, just because we do want them to be able to compete in the job force in the future. But I do think, I do think limiting it, especially at the elementary school level, just makes sense.
It was a loaded question. I know that. I just wanted to throw it out. I don't want to prolong this. We could talk about this enough. I'm sorry, because you know, we have a 10 o'clock cutoff and we are at 8:48. And so I do want to wrap up, but I do want to reiterate that everything that you just heard our new assistant superintendent say is something the principals have been saying every time we walk through a classroom. So this is not a topic that everyone sitting there disagrees with, but we have to make that balance of what we're doing. So that's definitely something we're talking about. But thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Richards?
Just one, just general, just thoughts as I look back on the, kind of everything this, this year. I really love the idea of the cohort approach to looking at data, tracking the class, this class of 2033 through their years, because I think that matters. It matters more to figure out, okay, how are we going to, if we're improving for next year, we should be working to improve for the class that's coming in, not the kids just left, right? Now, I know it's fluid, it's, you know, teaching and learning is fluid, but I think that's a really important approach. I appreciate that. I just want to comment just in general, I, you know, I, I have a goal being on this committee and seeing us, you know, do more with data, be better with data and tell better stories with data. What we hear from you and what we get through the questions is really important. We run a risk sometimes if we put out information that's lacking context. So for example, I, one of my comments is going to be what's happening with this beginning of year, end of year learning loss when you look at IREDDI scores? Because it didn't have any context for the fact that your end of year score didn't mean that you were, wasn't correlated to the beginning of year, right? Like, that's a big missing piece of that story. There's also a little challenge, you know, I think, I mean, I, I know we, I, the successes are so important. And I know that the data, that the test scores aren't everything, but we run a risk when we do things, say like, oh, we got a 12-point improvement from last year, when that actually would need to from the year before, we're actually down a point. So we have to be careful about how genuine we are with displaying the data that we do. I know with COVID and things like, there's a lot of stories to be told with our data. There's a lot of stories that the data are missing. And I think, you know, from, from a parent's perspective, from a data scientist's perspective, the more we can do with not just using our data internally, but like making sure the context and the stories are there to say, hey, test scores are one thing, but it's not the only thing. And really elevating more like what these do and don't say at all the different levels is important because otherwise, and that, you know, I could ask you to talk more about that, but we'll go into it another time. But I, otherwise, we're just looking at, okay, here we are again, overall, and there's more to it. There's a lot more to it than that. I think we owe it to ourselves, the community, our kids, our parents to try to do that. So that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Reese?
Quickest possible compliment. Thank you. I'm so thrilled that you're here putting emphasis on our greatest strength, our capital is our people. Not only if we're looking at our educators and our teachers and our administrators, but looking also at our students. I'm really, I feel like this was the missing sort of piece to tying this all up to really sort of accelerate all of our, all of our gains. And I'm thrilled. And just one more quick compliment for the, just teachers and educators in general. I think that there are so many of you who are really willing to always learn and grow and change and be curious. And I just, I'm inspired by how we're able to continue to look and grow and change and adapt. So well done. I'm just, yeah, this is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you to our principals for presenting and thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
It's not over. We have a whole bunch more.
Oh, that's a good idea.
We haven't even started.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school committee and will be enacted by one motion. If anyone would like to pull anything out of consent, we can add it to our discussion and/or possible action. Would anyone like to pull anything out of consent? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we will start with three final reads of policies from the previous school committee meeting. Friendly reminder, we just vote on these and we do not discuss them. So I will start.
Mr. McGovern, could I make a motion that we cover all items A through, through D in one motion?
I have a, you have a second with Ms. Barlow. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now that we have that, can I have a motion to approve all A, B, C, N, D and one action?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I am just going to, for a moment, pause E and I'm going to bring that to the end. And I would like to go over our FY27 budget timeline. And I believe that was approved by the budget subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay, so would you like to review that for us?
Ms. Carrie?
Ms. Riley or Ms. Carrie?
Sure. I mean, I can do high level, but Danielle, if you want to add anything, you'll see, we just laid out the, the process, beginning from, you know, when Danielle started this, the 29th, setting up our first budget subcommittee meeting that talked to the timeline all the way through joint finance. And we actually don't have the dates. Kate is going to reach out for the dates for the joint finance committee. The one thing I want to put on your radar, which you will see in your emails in probably not this week, maybe the end of this week, but definitely next week, will be somewhere between November 17th and 26th. This week, Katie, Danielle's assistant, will be scheduling the principals for their time slots. And then I will send all their time slots out to all of you so you can sign up for those sessions. So just to add that to your radar, look for your availability from the 17th to the 26th, and we will send out when each budget manager will be meeting with us so that you can join any and whichever ones that you'd like. We just have to be mindful of a quorum. So first come, first serve on the hot ones that everybody loves. So we'll get that out to you. Like I said, hopefully we'll be scheduled with the principals by the end of this week and then we'll get them all out to you so you can plan. I know some of you need advanced planning for work. I think that's it. Danielle, was you want to add anything?
That's good.
Any questions or comments related to the timeline here? Ms. Richards?
One question. To what extent do, have you talked about or anticipate the child, the process being difficult, more challenging, maybe more time consuming, giving changes that are happening at the federal and state levels regarding funding?
So the state level of funding is always an unknown, to be honest. We have trend data that we get from our organizations, from RIASBA, which is Business Association. We, we get it from our superintendents association and the Department of Ed tries to communicate with us. We are actually meeting with the governor and his budget subcommittee in the next week or so. So we get kind of an idea of where we think the governor's budget will fall, and that is the budget we use. And that comes out while we're in our budget cycle. So we actually end up with a number, a solid number we can insert. In terms of federal funds, we don't count on any federal funds for our operating budget. So what we have to look at in terms of federal funding is what are we funding in those federal grants that may need to move to the operating budget. But luckily, we don't anticipate big reductions in Title I, which is. big reductions in Title I, which is the bulk of where our, our federal funds are. We only get small dollars in those other buckets, so we'll be, we already started the conversation, but we'll be meeting with each budget manager to talk about, are there some priorities that are being funded within those federal dollars that we want to make sure we don't lose and we want to build into the general operating fund? So because we're not a district that relies on federal funding, does it have an impact? For sure, because we are, even small amounts of money in a budget our size makes an impact, but we are going to address priorities from those federal funding dollars into our operating budget, and we'll highlight that for you. This is, you know, every time we move something, we'll let the committee know this was something that was in our federal funds that we're pushing into the operating budget, because we don't want to lose whatever that priority is. You're welcome. But it is, it is certainly something to be aware of, of what's happening.
Any other questions related to the FY '27?
Twenty-seven. I know.
Budget timeline. Okay, well, thank you for highlighting this for us. We have a busy and challenging season coming up. Next will be our gate receipts quarterly report. I'll hand it over to Ms. Carey.
Yep, so this is for our first quarter, for FY '26 at this point, so as you can see, our missions and gate receipts. So you'll see the stipend game day workers, those will come out the next time, those were included in here. But those were funded to the general funds, the next time you will see that those will be taken out. And then you'll see that it's technically, it says rental of equipment, but really what that is, is that should be, that's the purchase of the volleyball jerseys for the championship game, so that's what's there as well.
Right, because that happened after July 1.
Yes.
Any questions related to the quarterly gate receipt report? Thank you. Next will be a bid and a vote for an approval for our district physician, as recommended by the budget subcommittee.
Yes, I'll just quickly share what we shared with the budget subcommittee, is we had one bidder, it went out to RFP. It is the same physician we've had, we had the last three years, so we had a three-year contract with him. He kept his prices the same, so, and there's no escalation in years two and three. And again, we're required to have a district physician, and he's the only person who bid.
Ms. Almeida?
I just have a quick question. I didn't know if there was a follow-up or an answer. I know Carly had asked a question during, about the insurance.
Yeah, so part of this is malpractice insurance for only the work he does with our district.
Okay, thank you.
We did, Ms. Carey did follow up with that.
Any other questions related to this? Seeing none, I will bring it to a, actually, first, I would like to get a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be an updated MOA for Get the Foam Out, which is a grant that we are receiving. Ms. Carey, would you like to take that one?
Yeah, so this is just an extension request for this grant, like other districts with, we ordered the dishwasher, I want to say probably in March, April, it still hasn't come in, so we're waiting on that, and we also have to hire someone to do installation. So depending on that cost, you may see a request for an RFP to go out as well, so.
And that will take up, because you might think a dishwasher, you know, like $900, but a dishwasher is $37,000? So it will, this, plus the installation will eat up most of what we have left from this grant.
Can I have a motion to approve this MOA?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any other questions or discussions related to this before I bring it to a vote? Seeing none, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be an updated MOA for our SBA Arts Act, version two.
Sure, so this is, the reason we had to ask for an extension on this one is because we had to order the cabinetry, and the cabinetry is another thing that has a long timeline, so as soon as the cabinetry gets here, Brae is ready to install it ASAP, which I think, what did we say, in the next four weeks? I think that's what it was, right, Derek? Yeah. So in the next four weeks, the cabinetry should be here, and then it should be, that's a quick turnaround, but we had to wait on the lead time, so we had, we asked for the extension, which we were granted by RIDE.
I was going to just ask, do they ever not grant it if you have proof that things were ordered and it's in process?
Right, and, and we, they, they know that we spend our money and we do what we're supposed to do, so he said, just ask for the extension, which we, that's what we're doing. And just as a reminder, after you vote on this, sorry, you all need to sign these two MOAs, so I can send them back, so please don't leave without a signature.
We will do that.
Thanks.
Could I have a motion to approve this MOA?
So moved.
Second.
Any other remaining questions or comments related to this? Just another.
One quick question. Are these the, the Kikamua art rooms that he talked about earlier? Yes, the three new, this is a capital grant, so we could use it for capital in the arts, so you can use it to buy. Last year, we also received a grant, you can use it to buy band instruments, you can use, so it's really about capital purchases, and so we used it to rehab those three rooms to make them new art rooms. Great, thanks.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next will be a quick budget transfer. Maybe since it's only one, you want to just explain why?
So I have one transfer on here from medical insurance, that's the line that we use to pay for medical insurance for our retirees. We have about 200-plus retirees, 300 probably, and then to move money from there to other professional services. And that is because we have contracted with a company called Flores, and they will handle all the retiree billing for us, pull people off who haven't paid, along with Cobra and all of those notifications that are required legally to go out, along with the notifications when someone is not paying their bill, and to follow up and make sure that they're termed if they don't pay as well.
Are there any questions, Ms. Almeida?
Just a quick question. So I guess I don't know the major difference between the two lines, because they're very similar, so I know you said one was for the, was it Flores? I'm sorry, what was the, the company name?
Flores.
Flores. So is that why it's separate? Because it's like a?
Yeah, so the 5.2 is meant for healthcare, so that's the cost for like the trust or Blue Cross, when we pay Blue Cross, that's what that line in 5.3 is like a purchase service.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, nothing to be apologizing for. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll just keep it with Ms. Carey and we'll go down.
Motion to approve.
We have to approve this?
Yes, yes, because it's out of the cost center.
Sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the budget transfers?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Now we'll head over to Ms. Carey again for our monthly financial reports.
Yes, so I highlighted two items just based on their utilization in the budget, and that was the web-based supplemental instruction, so that's the cost for, as you saw, the I Ready assessment that you saw tonight, along with other web-based, and there still is some money in that line that would be utilized for other web-based programs that they maybe haven't bought yet. And then the other technical service, that is the cost for all of our big hardware, like our financial system, our school ERP Pro, our school spring, all the other software that we utilize on a day-to-day basis as well. In addition, I did want to point out, so it should say, our hot water system at the Colt School, excellent with the Andrew School, but we'll have to use 5,200 from our capital fund. This is a hot water system that is severely degraded over time and has been needed to be repaired, and I've kind of held off, and now it really has to be repaired at this point, so.
Do we have any opportunities for emergency funding, or we kind of?
All of our funding is tied up in the capital.
We tapped out on all of our.
Which is a, which is a good thing, but you know, we've always been proactive about that. Anyone have any questions or comments related to this?
What's the, I'm sorry, yeah, we, didn't we use the Colt Fund for an emergency replacement of the, of the sign this summer?
We did.
Yeah, we could ask them for requests for reimbursement, the only thing is, it, it does take time, but we can definitely request that after the fact as well.
I, I've never actually gotten clear on what the Colt Fund is, you know, somebody can explain it to me later, but that's.
It's, it's an endowment we have on the Colt building from the original people who donated the Colt building to the district. So we don't manage it, the town manages it, but it's really like an endowment.
Okay, it seems like, yeah, if you're, we're like, well, we don't use it very much, because I've never heard of it before, last summer, maybe it's a.
The town council has to vote to approve of it.
Yeah.
Next is our PMA Perkins Eastman payments.
So as you can see, our latest payment is, you can see our first payment went out to Brae Builders for $6.9 million. They were very happy about that, so that's what you can see on this largest cost that you'll see, along with newer PMA and our Eastman payments as well.
And then as we discussed in their presentation, now that they've got the schedule finalized, and we've got the MOA, then they're going to actually update that cash flow diagram, so that really, for we, that really discussion for now and the next 14 months, that, that's what we'll be utilizing to kind of compare actual to budgeted, and you know, really make sure we're on the same time, the, the page. Anyone have any questions related to this? Seeing none, I will give one more to Ms. Carey for our ban statement.
Yep, as you can see, so we still have money in our other account, because we had to cut a check to Brae specifically, that was their request. So you can see that that, you'll see in the second page, that check was withdrawn and cut for them for that $6.9 million. You can see the interest we are capitalizing on with that fund as well.
I just have a question, you know, we're showing a statement for, it looks like the original ban, is that correct?
Yes.
So when will that?
The next payment to Brae, that will pretty much go away.
So that's, so that's, when we get our next check, we're going to take that and that'll?
Yeah, we'll transfer the money added there, because they prefer checks. So, so I'm sorry, the first one was ACH, because we didn't have checks mailed yet, so now they'll be set up.
So basically, you're saying at the end of next month, you think that first ban, which has got roughly 1.3 million, will be gone?
Yes.
And then you'll just close that up and kind of give us, we talked about it a while ago, a little kind of, here's what we spent, here's what we made?
Yes.
Situation, thank you. Any other questions related to this, Ms. Almeida?
Do you have a quick question? For the original ban that's in that ICS account, like Adam said, will that be officially closed out once that's dissolved?
Yes.
Okay, and then, second, I know sometimes these ICS accounts are linked to, like a money market or savings at the actual bank. Do we have any money in, sometimes they cap it at 250 before it's transferred into an ICS account. Is there any such funds in a savings account that's linked to this?
No, it, it all gets moved to the savings account when we're about to spend it, and then that stays in the ICS.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Carey. Okay, circling back, I'm sorry, to number E, approved legislative priorities. Just thinking about how we want to do this at the moment, and understanding where we are.
So if I could just make a suggestion based on past experience with these, as you have a list of legislative priorities, some have some backup or some explanation to them, I would suggest you prioritize them. I mean, I know that Nikki mentioned this at our last meeting, we don't want to bring 10 items to our legislators, we want them to focus. So I think you could decide on your top three to four things you want to bring to them. And, I mean, whatever number you all decide, but I would recommend you shrink this, so maybe ranking them, and you might want to discuss and share today, and then I can send out a spreadsheet where we can do a little power ranking, and then I can share the rankings with you, and we can select the top, whatever you determine, three to five priorities to bring forward. Just, I'm just trying to help you through the process, because if you sit here and try to say, we want to vote on this one for number one and that one for number, that just might be cumbersome, so I think if you took this time to maybe, folks who put them on, do a little explanation of why they think it's a priority, and then we can do a ranking via.
So if I'm understanding your suggestion correctly, we would go down the list and whoever put this on could kind of just provide some context.
Show the why and context.
And then what you're saying is, someone, I assume Kate would then go out, reach out to each individual school committee member and ask them to prioritize this list?
Amanda's back next week, so she would essentially create a spreadsheet that had all of these items on them, and then you would rank them, so we would say just at the top, and she would rank her one through 10, how she ranked them for each person.
Individual email request?
Yes.
And then we would come back and basically?
I'd share the whole spreadsheet too.
We would have the spreadsheet, and then we would have a final vote prior to the legislative breakfast, that'll be.
My thought, but happy to hear suggestions.
Ms. Pla.
I agree. The only thing I was going to add was, as I looked through these, if I understand them correctly, some of them are things we are asking our legislators to do on our behalf. There were a couple that read to me more like it was things we were asking our legislators to come to us with information on. So I think if there's things that we're giving them a heads up, please come to us with information on X, Y, and Z, I think that's fine. But things that we're saying, this is a priority for us, for you to push at the State House, I think we should keep that to the three or four. Does that make sense?
Ms. Almeida?
And just a comment, just my thought process. I know the last couple legislative breakfasts that we did have with our representatives, they are definitely well aware, I know I didn't personally add it, but I know during discussions, I know they're very much aware of the busing and transportation. I know that came to a hall or something, right? Didn't that come to a hall at the head? So, so I don't know, just again, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know if it's worth putting it on at this time, because they are very much aware of that, and it doesn't seem to be moving where it has to go, so not sure if it would be the most beneficial to keep it on there when we kind of know the state of it. Just throwing that comment out there.
Does anyone have any questions related, Ms. Richards?
Yeah, so how does this, okay, so we come up with a list of priorities, then what, what happens? Like, are you, are, and are you setting them, like an updated version of this memo, or someone leading a discussion?
We will bring you all an updated version of this memo on the 17th, that you will vote and approve, and we send that to the legislative reps. And that's our, our basis for discussion when we have our breakfast.
The only thing I would suggest is the downside in limiting to a few things is that we might end up losing an opportunity if we have somebody who's particularly interested or already working on a specific, particular area, right? So we, we could lose out if we focus on things that, let's say, people are all kind of lukewarm on, we might not get a lot of traction, and if we fluffed out something, that someone's like, oh, wait, I have a great opportunity for this, I know somebody. So I'm just trying to, like, strategically, like, I'm just, because since I haven't been to one of these breakfasts, you know, what are the other opportunities to make sure that we're not leaving something off the table? I totally agree with like needing to prioritize, but at the same time, I don't want to miss opportunities where, where they might exist, based on who's in the room.
Okay. So if I'm understanding everyone correctly, want to just go down the line and just kind of provide some context, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, so number one, I believe that was submitted by Superintendent Riley?
Right, this is just an appropriate tuition for CTE students statewide, so as you know, CTE tuitions are not set by anyone. There's a range that is published annually, which creates kind of a cap for, for what folks can ask from a particular district. So our Warren rate is different from our Bristol rate, so depending on whether a student resides in Warren or in Bristol, they're charged differently. And our tuition rate is relatively high. Now, I will say, the East Bay region that belongs to NACTEC, because remember, we don't have a CTE center for our district, it really is Providence, but Newport, Middletown, Portsmouth, Tiberton, and Little Compton have a tuition agreement, and they, they cap what they charge each other, and they charge the same amount, which is, Danielle, was it $16,000 for this year?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's $16,000, and that's all they, they've agreed to keep us in their group, so they only charge us 16, so we only charge them 16. But everywhere else, they charge us whatever our per people is, so that's what we do for the other districts. So we do have a few tuitioned in students this year, and we're charging them whatever the max rate is. But that just makes it really difficult to plan, because we never know where our students are going and what they're going to charge us. So one of the requests from the superintendents association, and I believe Rias also submitted this last year, was setting one base tuition rate for, for CTE students, to make it easier to plan for and budget. So I put that on there, again, just one option. The second one that I put on there, I only put two on, was to support the recommendations made by the Transportation Commission, that, so those are the only two that I put on the list.
And just going back to one, the benefit, it sounds like, or one of the positives, this is just maybe not helps us proactively plan, but at least gives us a better understanding from a financial perspective, what we're planning for in the next budget.
Well, it does help us proactively think, because we know about the number of students that we have that go out. We just don't always know what they're going to charge us for tuition. So we always know what Portsmouth, Newport, if our kids go there, we know what they're going to charge, but we have no idea what anyone else will charge because they have a range.
Okay, thank you. The next few came from Ms. Richards, so would you like to go through those, please?
Sure, so busing is what Anna just said, so yay, consolidate those. The rest of these, I just, I I probably, I'll be as brief as I can, but you know me. But the but just for for some context, I some of these, I I in my own thought and research. These were also informed by conversations I had with a couple of people who are currently running for office in Rhode Island for Attorney General and also other candidates. That I happen to meet running for Senate in other states. So I know we just talked a little bit about the fact that we don't rely on a ton of funding, for example, to support our multilingual learners because we don't have a huge population, but that population is increasing. I would very much hate to see the students get shortchanged by some squeeze of the budget. Just to say, oh, well, we're not getting this money this year, we're not getting this guidance support, we're just going to make do. I think that would be a huge disservice to them and to the current state of things. So I think this is something where it's very, and and this is also just kind of the tip of an iceberg kind of thing. This is some generalizing here because I don't have all of the the language or knowledge of the different federal changes that are happening for supporting multilingual learners and other issues that are tied to civil rights. But I I think that having not just state level, yeah, we support you, but also, and we're going to, we're going to work to help you secure the funding that you need, is is very important. Two, when it comes to AI policy and guidance, this is an area where I think we're like most states and institutions, we're already behind. Our data, our students' data, our kids' data is being used kind of in the the wild, wild west of of things. And the consequences for that, this is a little more amorphous for me, the the consequences are are things that we we aren't quite clear about in the immediate and long term future. But this might my idea here goes to data governance and if we we can't really enforce our own governance of how our students are able to interact with AI, whether it's materials that they're consuming or the way that data, their information that they use digitally or otherwise being used without strong data governance coming from the the state level. And the and the district level and from RIDE. So I am requesting that me, us coming up, I know, I know we've talked about things that are, I mean, Anna's mentioned things that are happening at the district to work on AI. It's only one tiny piece of the puzzle. That's one thing I did in my last federal job was talk about data governance structures. So what we do can only matter this much if above us, we don't have the structures to support what we need to support the the cybersecurity and infrastructure to protect our students in different ways. So again, it's kind of a big overarching, it's a little more amorphous for me to describe that. But again, we're we're already, we're already behind and I've already seen some miscommunication at the school level of policies that that are being transmitted to things that parents are being asked to sign about data policy, data privacy and stuff. So I I don't want us to fall even further behind on that. Health support with Medicare and Medicaid cuts, again, this is really kind of difficult to measure. But with the cuts from Medicare and Medicaid, that's going to affect us in this at the school level, but also our students at home. And I would really like to see support for analysis of what those costs will be. I think at the state level, that's the appropriate to to ask for that kind of information and also plans for how we're going to support them, similar to, like I said, with the multi-language learners. And other students, we need the state to be willing to support us, not just in squeezing in corners and and continuing to cut support services. Like we have been chipping away at a lot of our support services, even our number of nurses. These things are going to become more critical as time goes on, even if we lose a few kids in in, you know, in our overall population. I I don't mean lose, like, I mean, like our population declines naturally because we have less people. So that's that one. And then teacher retention recruitment, this is, you know, I don't think that the the teaching career, I don't know when the last time we've seen like a surge of like teaching becoming a more respected, highly paid profession. It's I think it gets tougher and tougher every year. One thing I heard today was this relies, this this relies on people, not program, the investment on people, not programs. There's double edged sword because because the examples were given where we've got really strong teachers, a lot of experience, or students do better. And so it becomes, you know, what a luck of the draw for some kids if they're going to be in a classroom with one of the more experienced teachers or not. And so, you know, again, asking for, you know, can we get support at the state level for research and predictive modeling about what's going to happen to our teaching? This the status of teaching in Rhode Island, not just in the next year, but in the next twenty years or more, what do we predict we're going to have? What do we need to do? Is it in and what are the factors that we can do to make sure we're recruiting and retaining more high quality teachers? So that we don't have, I know we have, I just in in talks of retirement last year, I know a few other teach, a few teachers who are just people I know talking about retiring this coming year and and the next couple of years. And so right there, if we're looking at this one to one dependence of how that relates to our student outcomes, then, you know. So at the state level, I think that 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 support to help us plan is really important and to when we're make advocating for budget, we can go to their research that you told us this. You told us that this is what we're going to need, now put the funding behind it now in the future. So.
Thank you very much. Next, I believe, was Ms. Piper, number eight.
Yes, I'll be quick because I put everything in there. The only sort of backup that I'm I I sent to Adam, but too late, it was just today. So this is, it's easier to start today. There are two companion bills about this constitutional right to an adequate education, one in the Senate and one in the House currently. The one, the Senate bill already passed. The House bill got to Education Committee and sat with our transportation bill, I guess, because it hasn't gone any further. But the sort of high level is that of the ten northeastern states, only Maine and Rhode Island do not have a constitutional amendment that guarantees kids the right to an adequate education. And the Rhode Island Supreme Court twice in ninety five and then two thousand and fourteen, I believe, agreed, basically, because two different districts sort of brought this case before the Rhode Island Supreme Court agreed that this was something that was lacking from our constitution. It's been a priority of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees forever. And again, I just think us emphasizing to, I guess, our House, our our state reps, more than anything, that we would like to see this move forward. That would be what I would ask of you. I would ask of you guys.
Thank you. And finally, number nine, I believe, was Ms. Barlow.
Yes, and I think actually mine is a process of learning and also maybe piggybacking on both something Nikki flagged and Margaret flagged. If we want to think about how these blend and work together. So mine was focused on special education, but mostly a look at the Rhode Island funding formula. This has been eye opening to me as somebody that has a lot of background on all fifty states funding formulas. And to learn that Rhode Island, particularly with special ed, is just a high reimbursement state. And when we looked at the funding, particularly as a school district that's interested in non-public busing, there was one fiscal year that we actually spent three point five million on busing our students that do not go to public schools. But we only spend four point five million on our high need specialized students. That was terribly shocking and disturbing to me. So I know right now the multilingual multilingual learners is like a supplement in our funding. In other states, there are weights, there are weighted student formulas. I don't know the last time the state has considered or thought about weighted student formula or done some. I know you always say a commission before something else, so maybe as I'm thinking about.
There has been a commission on that.
Well, and when the latest commission maybe was, maybe it's time along with the constitutional amendment, because normally these go hand in hand. Once you have the constitutional amendment for inadequate education, okay, now you're going to fund it.
Right, same thing with the MLL because that's that's only one of our extra funds that we get from the state, but there's no.
And that's new, right?
It is new and it's only been recently added to it was, it used to be we got like five thousand dollars and it's gone up. I think we're getting like ninety thousand now, but there's no commitment to it. And if we lose our federal MLL funding, you certainly need a real commitment from our local.
And I think this district has actually, from what I've learned, been doing a really good job in identification for MLL and special education students. So it costs more to educate those students and the state is not giving us more to do that. So maybe there is a blending of priorities in all of these that fit as well as what I'm seeing too. So.
Twenty twenty four is when the funding formula was last looked at in detail.
Yeah, I think that commission still exists, kind of like transportation.
Which made me wonder because what I linked to was something that RIDE evaluated, like that last link is something RIDE is looking into. So I don't know if they're looking to pitch this more or what it was, or Lisa, if you've seen that document that I linked to, take a look at, like, it was, like, are they thinking about this? But.
Adam?
I would just urge you that whatever you, I'm sorry, whatever you ask for, especially from this list that you tie it to funding, because so many times they're willing to support us and say, yes, you should do more for MLO. And not put any money towards it. So I would just urge us to keep that front of mind when we're asking for these things, that it's not just, yes, we want you to support this, but you, we want you to support it with money in the budget to, you know, we have plenty of unfunded mandates that people like and think is a good idea, but not so many that are funded. So that would be helpful.
Just a quick question, I know we're a little time crunch, but Nikki, just a quick question for you, if you're able to answer, yours was number eight, right?
Mine.
Is there, and you don't have to say, I just want, was there something that took place in this district in particular or something that brought this up that you are advocating for? I mean, I don't really know much about it. I just want to know what.
No, it's no, it's a, it's a statewide issue, which again, just since I've joined school committee, RIASK has been pushing for this. Because it just means that the state folks are more accountable. Like, I look on it that right now, the governor and our state legislators tell us, this is how much money there is for you to educate your kids. As opposed to us saying, this is how much money we need to adequately educate our kids. Like, to me, it's always been the wrong way around. And in oversimplifying this in my brain, this is why. And so I was at a conference for the northeast region of school committees. And they had a person come to speak about this and it was the first time that I truly understood the importance of it to all districts, but also including ours. Because now we can hold the state accountable, that it is, it is a constitutional right to our kids to have an adequate education.
All right, thank you. That's important. Thank you for the explanation.
To to that point, and and the last point, how do we, how could we, how would you suggest framing this issue to tie it to money? Because from what I read, like, it makes, what you're saying makes a lot of sense. But my first read was like, this is, this is good and and it's putting a law in there, but then somebody, who's going to be the arbiter of what we, what we, what we need? And how is that going to translate into the funding, I guess? And maybe I haven't thought that far, maybe others haven't thought that far.
No, I I mean, I guess, and Mary Ann would be a better person, I'm just pretending I'm a lawyer over here. But I guess the the main thing is that then we are able to hold the state to account. If we aren't, I mean, we're told what our budget is, right? We are told every year what our budget is after our own budget process.
Right.
We we learn then, this is how much money you are given to educate kids. How much we need, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Only comes out of that funding formula. So now we would have recourse. We would be able to go back and say, by law, you have to adequately educate our kids and this is not enough money. Enforceability, of course, is definitely an issue.
That that definition of adequate is going to, that's a.
Well, and I'll stand, we'll send the the actual bills out, the language of the bills out.
We use, I mean, that's when I, when I studied, we use the word quality, education, quality was the, it's, it's not, you know.
There's a, there's a.
We'll send the bills out and then everybody can see what they think.
All right.
How's my lawyering, Mary Ann?
I know what happens, but like the busing bill. Is it possible, because I know we have a time issue, but like, I really want to discuss these more. Do we have an opportunity, could we use part of our policy subcommittee meeting? Could we add this to the agenda?
Well, what I was thinking is kind of give us a frame of reference here. So if we can go back and get the survey, now we've got them ranked. Like I, my my intention isn't just to come here on the next school committee meeting in number November and say, here we are, we're going to do these numbers. I was hoping to have a discussion because I think I'm hearing, well, there might be like an opportunity to maybe merge a couple of these two things. I just think maybe it might be a little more efficient to maybe just, if we have nine, highlight, just understand where we are and go through. But I guess if that's fair to say.
I'm just thinking, could policies, could the policy subcommittee be a time where we could put more time to that, to sitting and discussing and and then reconfiguring and doing that? And then being able to kind of present ourselves.
Policy has its own agenda and remember, we're going to be looking at ten new policies.
We skipped October, so I think it should be done at this meeting.
Yeah.
Even though the policy subcommittee is public, no one's coming to those meetings, so.
It's also, yeah, it's not a. And it's not video.
Right, and it's not.
Well, I mean, I.
I guess my point is that I don't, my point is I don't think, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, carrying superintendents, if we have a list, right, one through eight, I don't think the intent is just to say, here it is, one through eight, we're going three or four. I think then we can just.
Bring all eight, I'm just suggesting.
I think then we can just kind of say, it's like, well, look at nine people like these two, right? And then we have four people like this one, four people like this one, four people like this one. So maybe we can just say collectively, do we feel like the top two that everyone voted for is good, great? Now we've got maybe three more in the mix and the last three are maybe not as popular, then we can really, to your point, discuss it. And so we can then come to that point of just having a, because I think maybe that gives everybody a little bit of time to digest, but I'll open it to everybody for consideration.
Yeah, this meeting's an hour long and it's once a year. So, I mean, my recommendation is to pick two at the most and continue. So we should just kind of.
But does it seem fair to, do we're proposing, understanding that we will have a full discussion on it?
Yeah, I just ask we add, leave adequate time.
Understood. No, I think we can, I will certainly make make a note of that. And I just think, while extremely valuable, I think we all understand that when we have the assessment presentation, it's extremely.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing that, I would like to get a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second. Okay.
Mr. Chair, before we begin going into the session, number eleven will not be necessary.
Okay.
We will not come out here and you will not be asked to take any disciplinary action.
Okay. All right, now. Come back and give, we haven't done it yet. Understood, I appreciate that point of order. Just kill the microphone to meet here or?
Yeah, just me here.
Is that appropriate? No one else is here, we can excuse our friends who I'm sure would love to stay even longer, but.
How will we go back into public session to vote? You won't be on camera unless we. It's it's up to you.
All you have to do is seal the minutes. Now, you can seal the minutes at the next school committee meeting.
Oh, that's fine, we could do that. I'll put that on the next agenda to seal the minutes from this meeting. Okay.
Do we need to adjourn publicly?
Well, you can say right now that you're going to.
Will not be returning.
Then adjourn.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
So should I get a motion to adjourn then or no? No, I can't.
Adjourn at the at the conclusion of executive session. So moved.
Second.
All in favor of what was just proposed?
Right.
Hi, any opposed? No, thank you.
Bye team, thank you.